...the 2016, 2017 budget. And I guess what we'll do, and this is my first time doing it, so you have to bear with me if I don't do it exactly correctly, somebody will correct me. But I guess we're gonna open up the floor to any type of participation you'd like to add. You have five minutes to speak toward budget concerns or priorities. And if anybody would like to come forward at this time to the microphone, we'd like to hear from them.
Superintendent, I'm Phil Turley with the Lehigh Boys Tennis Team. To Mariah and Freddie Phillips, he has the Lehigh Girls Team. Just I can present it to you, they used to say that pictures work without words. I think in front of you, you have a handout, and Mr. Bricky, I apologize for not having one for you, but we can get you one, and say a picture works without words. As you see on the screen, there are a picture there, Mr. Phillips will very quickly go through the condition of the courts at Lehigh School. Of course, these were established in 1989, '90 when the Lehigh School was first created. The first picture, you have all of the bottom courts there, and you see where they have been tried to repair, and you see, can slow it down a few minutes, pretty. These are the cracks that go all the way across the court there, on Court Number One. You can't really tell, but they're about an inch, inch and a half wide, and probably about two inches deep. They have been tried to be repaired, and you see the black rubber they've been put in there, but every year they keep sinking and sinking and sinking. In individuals sometime, a prayer, where this is going down the center of the two courts, I'll just go on through here, pretty. These spots here are low places on the courts where water stands, and it makes the surface, you know, deteriorate, stuff like that. This is probably caused because the court are sinking. The next picture there, these are more dry spots, you see on Court Number Two. This is the conditions of the net post. We've got some explanatory. Back in the corner here is very low spots, it gets water on it every time. And the next slide will show you the water standing there today, because these pictures were taken today, how the water stands there. And all this water comes from the baseball field down to the bank there, and right on to the courts. That needs to be lowered. These cracks, these are the other courts, the top two courts here, this goes across Court Number One there. Next slide will show you Court Number Two, it goes all the way across. Next slide, he's up at the net, and you can see the condition there, what they look like. And they're all ripped, four cracks. And that goes all the way across the court. More net post problems. Back in 1989, when the courts were being built, I went up there, and I tried to get the company to put that fence on the inside of those posts, like all the tent courts I've ever been on have been fixed that way. I even tried to tell them those bolts there were the second arrows are sticking out, which is a safety issue too. So far, we've been fortunate, we have been real fortunate. I know it's mysterious, and I'm a redhead, because she used to coach tennis, and she knows what I'm talking about here, and everything like that. The next picture, you can't hardly tell, but the fence is leaning out, and you see the bottom of it coming out, it's going eventually to all the left-hand corner on Court Number Four, if I were to fall off completely before too long. Between Court One and Two, and Three and Four are the ditches for the arrows are flying, that stands for water all the time. The next picture will give you a better example of that. The next picture shows you that, like I said, in '89, I tried to get, split those fence posts on the pavement, instead of off the pavement. Now, when we breed weed eat all the time, for the grass, it can't help but throw in those rocks and gravel onto the court, which we have to sweep off, and everything like that. So the courts are in pretty bad shape. We have tried to do some repair work on them, best that we could, but I would like to ask you all to consideration for an upgrade, because the courts are about 27 years old. And I think the best upgrade would be to remove the fence and use it later on, take the pavement down, get a good solid foundation there with some rock, get it high enough up, where the water will not go into it, and take it from there. And I think Mr. Phillips has another comment to add.
Couple, two years ago, they had a quote done on the courts, and we couldn't find it anywhere, but it was around $116,000 to take them down to the dirt, put them back in, and therefore, we would request the 125. At this time, we have no estimates here. And it has been written into part of Lehigh's upgrade plans, I think, as a part of their budget request, but...
Question?
So basically, start all over with them, and fix what's causing this problem?
I wouldn't argue at all.
You think that's what would be best?
On the northern end of the courts, I mean, they're just falling off, just breaking off.
And the reason water's standing on it is that it has those big hills coming down to it, and it's exactly level with the courts. So the courts being the lowest spot, all the water's coming off the hill, it's standing up.
I know, Mr. Cherry?
Yes?
I know that, for example, the Basketball League has grants and stuff for field work and things like that. Do you suppose maybe the USTA might have...
The USTA will match, if you qualify for their top rank, they will match up to $25,000.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to address the board concerning the next budget?
Good evening. I'm Sandra Johnson, I'm Lee County Education Association President, and I wanted to give some recommendations from our members. Our budget focus is, this budget year, 2016, '17, we would like to focus on cutting administrative costs and returning money back to the classrooms and the students. Over the last 10 years, we've lost over 600 students, but administrative costs have continued to increase. In 2006, we had over 3,500 students, now we are under 3,000. Our recommendation is to eliminate all unnecessary trips, and make sure that all trips are approved by the school board with a cost estimate. Eliminate purchasing of cell phones for employees, teachers use their own, everyone else should also. Eliminate advanced ed, CIP, return to Lee County pacing, and all other unnecessary programs that the county has wasted hundreds and thousands of dollars on. Reorganize the central office and assign job titles that match job duties. Teachers have no idea who's in charge of what. Look at doing centralizing accounting with the county to better streamline the accounting process. Use actual direct deposit for all paychecks and reimbursement checks that will allow employees to use their bank of their choice. Use a line item budget that is posted online every month, so the public can stand for Utilize personnel more wisely throughout the county. Implement a hiring freeze, absorb administrative positions when possible. Stop all extra professional development days that take teachers away from the classroom and put subs into the classroom. Reduce all extra paperwork that will take away from instruction. Standards of quality, SOQ guidelines for staffing should be followed. Use current trends and comprehensive projections on student enrollment numbers for the budget. Actually allow teachers to give input on the school calendar, minimize instructional time, I mean maximize instructional time, should be the main focus of the calendar. Almost all the teachers agree that schools should start on Wednesday or Thursday. Take either three or five days of Thanksgiving in first semester, no later than December 21st, and start the second semester on January 3rd. Get either three or five days for spring break, and get out in May. All professional belt work should be done before school starts. The principals and the teachers would like to have their schools back in their hands. Another focus is to improve student safety. We need to replace buses that are worn out. Over the past few years, money was spent in administrative areas instead of student transportation. County vehicles are also worn out. The county needs to keep a couple of vehicles for transporting students or teachers to meetings, competitions, etc. Proton of cars can be purchased for around 15,000 each. Would you take your family across the state in a vehicle with 160,000 miles on it? Teachers do, they have to. Security cameras should be installed in every school. The salary scale is very important to every teacher. Our current salary has stepped 30, and you do not reach the top until after you complete the 29th year. VRS is based upon your highest three years. And the current salary scale focuses teachers to stay, forces teachers to stay to year 32 before they can max out in their VRS. We have been asking for years to eliminate some steps on the salary scale and move the last step to year 27. This way, every teacher can max out at their retirement in 30 years. This will allow teachers to retire early, which will save the county some money. Every teacher is four years behind in the salary scale, and we would like to ask the board to look at adjusting the salary scale to give, and give it a separate. County retirement sends, the ERIP policy should match the salary scale. Currently, the policy gives 15% for 30 years, but the teachers don't max out VRS until 32, which drops the ERIP to 5%. The policy should be open for, from year 30 to 33. And you can receive the 15% for seven years, and the county portion of the health insurance for 10 years with no workdays. After 33, then you receive, you should have to do the workdays. This allows teachers to stop and encourage retirement by their year 33. Students should come first, and teachers that are in classrooms should be paid for their fair share. Allow teachers to stop the top out on the salary scale after 27. This is very important for retirement, since the retirement is based on your highest three years. Give teachers a step raise and fix the salary scale. Pay a little more on insurance, health insurance as possible. Include teachers and staff in the budget process. Sickly, the sickly crossing needs to be changed back to like it was. It currently says that if you miss three consecutive sick days, you must file an FMLA. The policy should state that after three consecutive sick days, you can file for FMLA for a serious medical condition. The current policy would make you file it if you had a toothache or a cold for three straight days. This is not in intent, the intent of the FMLA. Maybe the new school board attorney should examine the policy. And the new salary scale that moves back to year 27, and we get it back.
I think the, you know, we can't do everything in year one, but I think the LCA will be very pleased with what this board's gonna do.
I'm already pleased. I think they're already pleased with some of the things you've done.
Good, we want them to. Hope we're gonna continue that.
And it's gonna take time, but a lot of this, we have the very same concerns that you all have.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna happen overnight, and we're just, be patient with us, and we'll do what we can.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My head is moving. Hello, most of you know me, I'm Melanie Jordensen. My husband and I raised two children, starting in K through 12 here. Both were successful in college and in post-grad. I think it's real important, even if you don't have children in Lee County, that all of us come to meetings and care about the school system, so I wanted to explain to you why I'm here. When I read about Lee County's school system in my Washington Post, boy, it got my attention. I'm not sure if you're aware, you probably are, but I wanted to make everyone aware. Boy, the past six years, which I wasn't aware of, has been very hard on our funding formula. For years, I worked with Ford Quillan, and I know how hard he worked for that funding formula. Somewhere along the way, us poor rural counties really got the tough end of the bargain. Because of that, I'm really here to say, good luck. I had no idea, according to the Post, the past six years, and they mention Lee County because the poorest rural are the ones not getting the funding that the rich are, all based on the local matching. Though Lee County is gonna lose nearly $2,500 per student, I can't imagine trying to do a budget based on that loss, and knowing we're trying to keep jobs, trying to keep schools open, we're trying to keep everything. The second thing I always wanna pay attention to, and I'm not sure that the other boards have, so I wanted to point out to you, is every time I hear attendance, which is always at every school board meeting, I gasp. Not only are now the funding formula hurting us, but we're always losing attendance. You know, we heard recently, 600, I think, you know, on the webpage, just the last two years, we've lost 128 students. I'm also very aware, which is a whole other issue, about homeschooling and the amount of money we lose because of the homeschoolers. You might wanna go into that and really show examples. Because of that two-pronged approach, in terms of the budget, I just have one request, and it may have happened all the other years I attended meetings, but I never really thought it did, and that is, please, don't just do stopgap. I understand some wonderful suggestions. My daughter played tennis on all four of those tennis courts. But the most important thing, I think, for a good active board is get a comprehensive plan. Don't just do line items. Have a whole comprehensive plan, because it looks as if the state is gonna give us less funding, and we're gonna constantly lose students. The one other thing I always like to highlight, because as a parent, kids that got through all 12 years, I really would hope the funding and the money can be towards math teachers. Those of us that have had kids in advanced classes know, it is very hard to get math teachers, and to keep math teachers. So when you're looking at specific things, please think about, we might have to pay some good math teachers more to keep them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Cherry, Melon?
Sure.
Have to have a copy of that article with you, or anything?
I knew I should've run off. Oh, yeah! There you go. There you go.
I'm sorry that I didn't bring copies before. My name is Joe Carson, I am on the Kennedy Ftown Council, but I'm here before you today as a citizen of Lee County, and a person who feels passionately about education, I say that every time. The article that Melanie just made reference to was in the Washington Post on January 24th. And fortunately for myself, this was like a windfall, because I was going to the Legislative Day in Richmond on the 26th. So I got to see this before going up and meeting with Terri Kilgore and with Bill Carrico. Like Melanie, I don't know what I was thinking or not thinking, I had no idea that those cuts were made to our budget back in the 2008, 2009 school year, as a result of the recession. It was a total overall cut of 800 million to Virginia schools. For us, that translated into, as she mentioned, a $2,500 cut per student from 2009 to 2014. And I'm here, you know, and I'm very sympathetic to your whole list of concerns, and that's chipping away, and we all know, even in our households, we have to cut back on all sorts of things, and probably do without a lot of things. But I think that this needs to be addressed as the root of the problem. This formula is still in place, we need to have a plan to get this formula restructured back to where it was, so that we can get our money back to start with. And the General Assembly is meeting now, I did take it upon myself to mention this to Terri Kilgore, and, you know, what are we gonna do about that? Lee County got hit worse than any other locality in the state of Virginia. And if we don't do whatever it is we need to do to encourage our legislators to get this reformulated back to where it was, we're continuing to dig a hole for ourselves. And for me, and just an example, because the cuts were very arbitrary, they were just cuts. One of the things that was, that they had involved in those cuts was school buses, and the longevity, the life of a school bus. It was, at one point, 12 years. They increased back to 15. Now, the life of a school bus to us, in Lee County, as compared to up there in Northern Virginia, is very different, very different. We have, the terrain is bad, we have mountainous roads, so the life is very different than a bus somewhere else. The other thing that they talked about was travel expenses, cutting travel expenses. Let's talk about that, because I worked here for like 10 years, and I knew what it took for us to go to meetings in Richmond, as opposed to somebody living in Northern Virginia, and getting on a public transportation to go to a meeting in Richmond. So when we get a cut in travel expenses, that's serious business. So those are just two examples of how you can't arbitrarily cut across the board without taking a look at the specific needs of a community. I am here to ask that we do whatever, if it takes a writing campaign before this General Assembly ends, that we get to Terri Kilgore and Bill Carrico and say, listen, we can't afford to do this to our county anymore. We need you to do everything within your roundled responsibility to get that formula restored back to where it should be prior recession. That's all.
Anyone else would like to address the budget? Not, do we have a motion to adjourn or recess?
I move that we recess until 6 o'clock for the regular board meeting. Second?
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Of the boardroom. Obviously, the February 18, 2016 meeting of the Lee County School Board, now ask for approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we would ask for approval of the minutes of the January 7, 2016, we've all done that. It's a February 4, 2016 special call meeting, let's do that separately, if you don't mind. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we would recognize Lee High School for a Lee High School Advanced Ed presentation.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Warren, the principal of Lee High School. This is Miss Stacy Dafter, our assistant principal. She also served up as our Advanced Ed Department Chair. Our school's mission statement was developed in alignment with the division's motto of committed to excellence. We adhere to our school's motto of aspire, expect, and achieve. A few historical notes about our school, it was named for Life Force Harry Lee, and our school mascot is a revolutionary era general. Were one of the two high schools, and the largest of the 10 schools in the Lee County public school system. One great benefit of our school is that our campus connects with the Lee County Career and Technical Center, which enables our students to explore careers and enhance technical skills to prepare them for life after high school. Having a large and innovative campus, we take great pride in meeting the academic, athletic, technological, and social needs of our students. Lee High School was fortunate to be the recipient of the Slint Foundation funds to renovate our school library and our school auditorium, with additional security grant funding allowing us to upgrade our security system with over 60 cameras. Teaching the whole child was the foundation for developing our school's beliefs. Lee High School currently houses 673 students, 69.5% of whom are economically disadvantaged. We have a large faculty and support staff, all of whom are highly qualified. Since 2014, 2015, our Teacher of the Year, Miss Angela Thomas, was also chosen as the Division Teacher of the Year. Lee High School students are offered the opportunity to apply for over 85 scholarships each year, with the AIM Scholar being the most awarded. The 85% required graduation rate for state accreditation has been achieved during my tenure at Lee High School. Two of our most notable business partners have garnered vast support for our school are Pine Valley National Bank and Field City. Lee High School has garnered many accomplishments over the past 27 years. We had our first state wrestling champion, and Mr. Mike Twiggs, former band director and former school board member, directed our band at our 25-year celebration. At Lee High School, we are most proud of our students and their accomplishments. We have yielded doctors, lawyers, and American Idol contestants, and profound military leaders, to name a few. There are no bubble sheets, statistics, or tests that can measure the intangibles we offer the students at Lee High School. We are more than facts and statistics, we are Lee High School. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Superintendent Mike Bricky for the VSBAs School Board Appreciation Month presentation.
I'll tell you what, it's good to see such a large crowd here, it really is. I hope that the time I'm here, that I can look out and see this many people. It's good when we've got community participation like this. The first couple of weeks, mainly the first week, I had an opportunity to go out to most of the schools while I'm here, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I love Lee County, and the schools, and I hope to get back into some of the classrooms. I really enjoy that part of it. This, this month is, February is School Board Appreciation Month, and this month is used to observe the service of our school board members in Lee County. And the theme this year from the state is turning vision into results. It reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education. These people are in charge of budgets, over multimillion-dollar budgets each year. And as some of you said, they're getting harder and harder to juggle everything we need with getting, with our getting less and less money. But at this time, I want to present them with some certificates here, and show our appreciation to them. Also, I want to thank Ms. Crystal Ely, which is Family Consumer Science, for the refreshments this evening for our school board. They enjoyed them back behind, I guess they were hiding from us. They haven't had supper, so they're in a good mood, hope all of you all are. Mr. Robb, Michael Kirby, Adam Bannon, Tom Horner, and Jamie Disney.
Next, Mr. Bricky will also give a recognition on the VSBAs School Board Clerk Appreciation
Chethy Burgum was laughing at me today for my yellow tabs. A lot going on. This is also, I'll tell you, these people are right... This is also, I'll tell you, these people are right, not only are right hands, are right arms around here. They do a lot of work for us. The Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated this week also as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And I want to say to these ladies, Alicia Fields, Kathy Bergen, and Denise Lambert, you do a great job. You really did what I've seen of everyone in here. I've really enjoyed working with all of you. We've got some flacks with them, too. Alicia, I want you to get up. I'll get you.
Kathy's hiding in the back. Mrs. Mallory, Anne, right here.
Thank you.
Also allow Mr. Brickley to address Career and Technical Education Month.
As I said, I visited most of the, well, all of the schools the first week or two, and I really enjoyed going to vocational schools, Career and Technical Center. I spent as much time there as anywhere, and I'll tell you what, they're doing a great job at our Terry Welch and his bunch. I think that's where we're going to, we're going to see a lot of emphasis in the next few years. That's probably where it needs to be. We need to stay in the classrooms doing what we're doing, but we also need to do a good job in vocational and look at those courses and see what we can improve. They do an excellent job of preparing a highly skilled workforce. Congratulations to Mr. Welch and the Career and Technical Center staff for all they do for us. Also, I understand that here in Lee County, it's great, I've been looking at these things for years in Kingsport Times News, the drawing cards and the write-on. And Debbie Jesse and William Muncy, I understand, are the ones that clip these things out of the paper. And if you look at them in the papers on Monday, Kingsport Times News, they've got drawing cards, and I'm sure you've seen these. The elementary kids have got some of the cutest little drawings in there you've ever seen. This month, we're recognizing some students from Lee County that had the Kingsport Times News drawing cards. Adriana Barnett, Madison Cochran, Liam Daugherty, Caitlin Eldridge, Riley Cluck, Emily Laster, Darcy Robbins, and Jaden Stewart. The write-on is in Wednesday's paper, those, the drawing cards are Monday, the write-on is Wednesday. Those are Noah Alsop, Selena Alsop, Jacob Davis, Kenley Isingminger, Dylan Fannin, Allison Hobbs, America Slankford, Jamie May, Dale McMurray, Madison Phillips, Destiny Reagan, Zoe Taylor, and Alexis Turner. Congratulations to all of these young people.
Well, I was just going to say, one thing I am kind of working on is a certificate to give the students whose work and articles appear. Secondly, I would bring your attention to the one article about, think about what you would change at your school. I was curious at the two items that they brought up there, and was it two bigger problems? One was simply wanting hot water in the school, and another one was about a complaint about gym class. They didn't think they ought to be in gym class. We're doing, we must be doing pretty good then at the school. Those are their biggest concern.
Thank you. Now call him Wondalene Adams for the spelling bee winner.
I'm sorry that Johnny cannot be with us tonight. I think he had a date with his dad, right? So, but he was the Lee County Division Spelling Bee winner, and he will be going to Knoxville for March 12th to represent Lee County. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. Mr. Brickley can address Schools' highest percentage of attendance.
This month, there's a traveling trophy. This month, it goes to Elkhorn with a 97.2% attendance rate. Flatwoods was second with 95.6. Congratulations to those.
Next, we come to public expression. I'll just remind everyone to limit your comments to five minutes. It's not a question and answer session. It's not a time to name names or go after people. Say what you want to say, we'd be glad to hear you at this time. If anybody could address the board. State your name, you come up, please.
Good evening. My name is Judith, most people call me Judy. Heinz Early, and I'm a retired teacher from the Lee County Public School System of a period of 31 years, and the latter five and a half years not having to walk through the doors. I've been waiting for several years to have this opportunity to speak before a board in open session, and this opportunity I have tonight to speak before you has been made possible as a breach to my federal lawsuit settlement I had against the Lee County School System during the five and one-half year period of time. I won my case by settlement after proving the school board had expired all their conspiracy of options for my removal. As to the nature of why I'm here, it's called abuse. I'm a survivor of the most vicious, malicious, calculated abuse anyone could ever endure from dictators and tyrants employed by the Lee County Public School System. I come from a family of educators all dedicating over 160-plus years to the Lee County School System and all respectable, well-qualified, excellent diligent workers. I want to begin tonight to tell you about some despicable behavior of your employees, and many of whom are still in the system. These employees use their positions to act out the most evil, vicious, unprofessional, dishonest type of behavior that anyone could imagine coming from adults who call themselves professionals to be around children. Those doing this had a mission, and it was to put me and my family completely out to which they bragged about on social media. They stated that we smelled so good that it made them sick. They thought they were so good at what they were doing, they would never get caught, and if they were caught, they knew they were buddies of those in high political power positions in the county, so who would do anything to them? I've survived the most malicious attack on my character and reputation that most people could have ever gone through or even imagined they would do, but I have all of the evidence and testimony with 100% facts to support what I am about to tell you, and I'm here tonight to expose it. The abuse I endured is as follows. Vicious lies with malicious intent, vicious slander and defamation with malicious intent, stalking, bullying, hacking into our home computer and sending evil emails, the worst possible cyberbullying probably in the state of Virginia on social media, many of whom were proven to be school employees, including school board directors and teachers, harassment, assault, stealing, vandalism, breaking and entering my residence by unlawful entry and committing harassing acts and leaving items behind, breaking and entering my two different classrooms at two different schools by unlawful entry and committing harassing acts with intent to cause mental and emotional harm, breaking and entering my vehicle by unlawful entry at Johnson City Medical Center when my father had a stroke and leaving harassing articles inside, intent to cause vicious, emotional, mental, and physical abuse and distress, falsifying evidence by school board attorneys, superintendents, school board directors, principals, and teachers as to remove me and continue to remove me from my job with no actual evidence to do so, bribery, perjury by a school board secretary to the superintendent, intentional withholding of a VRS health credit form upon my retirement as to keep me from receiving this from the VRS. This now school board secretary knew her name had already been submitted as to the abuse she helped do at one of the schools, and this was a vindictive attempt to keep me from getting VRS health credit, and three years later, when she was caught, the school board and VRS had to back pay me over $4,000. Illegally permitting a minor student from rightful representation in regards to discrimination, falsifying student grades, and illegally using discriminatory measures to allow students to obtain awards, falsifying student SOL tests, threats upon threats continuously by the superintendent and school board attorneys in the form of letters, and malicious and unethical misconduct of school board attorneys in a net for disbarment. And last, but most certainly not least, a breach of my settlement, which in doing so allows me to speak before you tonight. The transferring of my husband and additional lies and defamation of my character and my husband's character published on social media by the present secondary director who happens to be a sister-in-law to a present elementary director already caught in her misconduct to try to have me fired. Legal action has also been taken on that. Do you want these people in leadership positions or in any type of positions in the Lee County Public School System? Now, what did the school system ever prove that me or any of my family ever did, since that has been the question for many years that this has been going on? Well, the answer to that question is absolutely nothing, except we were all doing an exceptionally excellent job in our classrooms. Absolutely nothing. Deposition testimony and DVD recording of a certain school board member during that time who had been proven to have been 100% involved, and all I endured stated these school personnel were just playing jokes, playing games, and having a little fun. Oh, my goodness. Is there laughter from anyone in the audience or stage at this despicable behavior, and is this the best excuse they have I could get caught? A few janitorial staff were fired, one school board attorney quit after being reported to the board.
I think you're up to your time, so you can finish up, please.
Pardon? I just got a couple. Two other school board attorneys have been fired, been since fired, some faculty quit or retired quickly after being exposed, several were transferred but still remain employed, and some are right here in the central office who have been calling the shots. By not taking any further action is the same as saying this type of unprofessional misconduct is okay in the county, and I'm on my last page just briefly. So I'm asking for the immediate and complete dismissal, as stated in the Code of Virginia 8VAC20-70, of every school board employee still working in the Lee County School System who willfully participated in some or all of this most vicious attack of abuse on myself and my family members. All I have stated to you tonight is proven in deposition testimony and bounds upon our narrative evidence. I'm also asking for my son to be given a status and award he rightfully earned, and my husband be reinstated to the Director of Transportation at the bus garage, along with a small sum of back pay since the time of his transfer. If you agree with me that the Lee County School System has no room for any of this illegal, malicious, abusive, unethical behavior, then you will not have a problem in all dismissing those involved because they're all guilty. Proven criminal activities and the most unethical and unprofessional misconduct from school board attorneys and school personnel that I've ever seen in my life.
Okay. I hate to cut you off, but we can't go on forever. You said you were on your last page, and you were almost through, so let's move on.
These people are a threat to students and anyone around them who might get in their way. Why would Lee County want any of them in any job capacity? Many people have asked, Judy, how did you do this? My answer is always the same, by the grace of God. His grace is sufficient because He carried me through this. When you know that you know that you know you've done nothing, and they had nothing but lies and lies, and you will win because you fight like I did. The children in this county deserves the best, and if you agree, then clean this abusive political corruption completely out. I was asked by the staff of VCU Medical Doctors at MCV in Richmond, Virginia, involved in this case to appear on the Oprah Winfrey Show to expose this political and religious conspiracy against me and my family. I believe it's past time this made national news. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments for public expression? Please identify yourself.
My name is Joey Ely. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. I was coming as a concerned parent. I have a daughter who plays basketball at Lee High School. We have a radio station in Johnsonville, Virginia, who degrades the children on the radio station, who also degrades the coaching staff, all coaching decisions, anything that's done, this radio announcer, he degrades them. It is subject to my daughter to cyberbullying. She plays on an AAU team, and the children that are on the other team have listened to the radio station and may have made fun of her due to what has been said on the radio station about her play. I've talked to several parents, I've taken legal counsel, and I come to the board, I want to know, have a lot of parents who will sign a petition for this radio station not to be allowed to come back or to do away with at least this radio announcer. He has degraded her completely. Being a 16-year-old girl, she has enough problems as it is through life and harassment and bullying and things like that, so all of that has just added to that problem. I also would like to know if Lee High or the school board can do anything to stop this radio station from being able to come down and this man degrade and talk about these children and the coaching staff who put in so much time and effort, and all their efforts are degraded, and the children have a hard time buying into the coaching philosophies when they go home and the family who couldn't come to the game, who listened to it on the radio, just has nothing but negative things to say about what has happened. She's pretty upset. You know, the bullying thing, if I'm not mistaken, I think Lee County has a no bullying policy at all. Well, this man has given people ammunition to bully her. And I would just like to see if there's something that we can do to have this radio station not be allowed to come back, at least this man not be allowed to come back and announce at our school, and if so, what do we need to do? Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any comments for public expression? Please identify yourself.
Donald Ray Belton. I'd like to thank the board for opportunity to speak. I would like to address the way that you have chosen to hire our next Lee High football coach. The cowardly act to start passing a sign up sheet looking for anyone interested in the head varsity football coaching job. The people behind this did not have the courage to face this man face-to-face. When he found out about this, he went and dropped to the principal. The principal stated that this was not of her doing, but it was going to happen anyway. I've heard this was done because of poor job performance. Let's look at that. He's been at this position four years. We've made the playoffs three out of those four years. Our one-loss record has improved. Our community pride has just jumped way up of the sporting program. He and his coaches have taught these young men to respect other players, coaches, teachers, and more importantly, their own parents. In the importance of, the importance of good grades, they push that. Heck, he and his coaches, even suspended one of his coach's sons from the team for poor grade performance. Sure, our head coach is not the one to jump up and down, holler, scream, and just act crazy. In some ways, that's me. He gets his point across in other ways. I support this coach and think you are making a big mistake. I told the coach he ought to fight this, and he said that he was above that, and he didn't want to cause any problem that would later on affect the kids and the players and the program. That's the type of man he is. You know, even a criminal has the right to face his accusation, and this man, no one has ever stepped forward and looked him right in the eye, told him why he was getting terminated. I actually thought with this new board, all the behind-the-backdoor politics might stop, but I guess we're getting the same-o, same-o. You know, there's a lot more problems at Lee High than just the football program, and you all are well aware of a lot of those. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Vicki Haley. I'm the guidance counselor at Pinkton Middle School. Good evening, Mr. Brickley and the school board members, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I think that the man before me pretty much summed it up, but I just want to put my two cents in. First of all, I applaud you, school board members, for the most part, for the good job that you have started. We can hang our heads high now because we know that we've got people that care because of the job you've already done. I wish that you would put in the paper the amount of money that you've already saved. I wish you would put in the paper to show Lee County people that it can be different, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to ask you, I don't have to talk about Coach Martin and his staff because Don just did. Our program has greatly improved. I have a son that plays on that team that played at Pinkton Middle School. But I want to ask you, why do we need to change? But more importantly, I want to ask you, who wants the change? We can't find anybody who will say, we want the change. We can't find anybody who will say, we want the change. So what I'm asking the school board members is to do what is right for our kids and for our coaches. This man didn't deserve this. I don't care if you liked him, if you didn't like him, he didn't deserve it. He has more integrity in his little finger than some of you have in your whole body. And it's time that we in Lee County stood up for what is right and we don't do business as usual. So I'm asking you, and we're dependent on you, to do the right thing, to be a board of integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public expression? Please identify yourself.
My name is Eddie Watson. I'm from Jonesville. Paul Johnson, I didn't realize it tonight, but the school board appreciates you tonight. I didn't bring a gift.
I can't speak.
Asked my son tonight, I said, you know, is there anything you ever passed a little bit that you know you would have to bring up, bring for the school board? And he suggested that I just stay at home, watch a Kansas City technical. Seems like some of his friends were not too impressed by my suggestion at the last meeting that I thought the two-hour school delay was used to do my pre-visit. I would like to recant and recall my previous comments in that regard. A few weeks ago, at my work, we had a two-hour delay going to work. And I was able to have coffee, watch the news, warm up my car, tiptoe outside instead of rushing. I liked it a lot. I can easily see my faculty and students alive who like these delays. After seeing on TV Dickinson County is using three-hour delays, I now believe we should have three-in-one hackovers. This will give our students the opportunity to go by McDonald's and have an early lunch. This gets me back to one thing, I still not wish you were here. I don't, I saw, I pulled copies of their menus out of the newspaper and their menus are still barely edited. And I'm all for my assessment. Just by luck, my wife debated after me an editorial she wished me to read in Kingsport Times on January 27th, which had nothing to do with this. But they had reprinted an editorial from Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Post-Gazette. Getting students to eat healthy takes flexibility. The challenge of the nation's school lunch program is not unlike that of a parent with a picky eater. Creating a healthy balanced meal is just half the trick. The other is getting the child to eat it. Since healthier standards were put in place for school meals in 2012, more fruits, vegetables, low-fat dairy products and whole grains have been features of the breakfast lunches that reach 300,000 students in 100,000 schools every day. But too many children were put off by the new menu and were throwing away too much food. Last week, Senate Committee approved a bill that would reauthorize the schools' meals program for another five years. But scaled back, there was a regulation, school meals would retain the emphasis on fruits, vegetables. The USDA would delay until at least 2017, plans to cut back on the amount of sodium in menu items. Maybe occasionally get some french fries. They compromise skills schools more flexibility without betting improvements for healthy cafeteria eating. The Improvement Child Nutrition Integrity and Access Act of 2016 now goes to the Senate Floor where it deserves to be approved. I don't know anything about this. We've got a new attorney up here, Mr. Sturgill, who I recently met. Maybe you can ask him to find the loophole. If he does so, maybe you can name one of the cafeterias after me and him. On a serious matter, I've not known Mr. Sturgill, but I have known his grandfather, Joe Smitty, for many years and he's a wonderful man. And he taught in this school system, this very building in the early 50s, I believe. And I understand here, I have not seen him, but there's a wall of fame for school teachers. And he would have to be on the shortlist of the most esteemed teachers there was teaching in this school system. And if he's not on that wall of fame, I hereby do not nominate him. These text comments I have written down because as my academic record would probably prove, I don't always remember everything. So, I don't think it's going to last five minutes.
Forty seconds.
How much?
Forty seconds.
You're kidding me. I don't know where to skip through it and waste my time. Anyway, I've asked the earth, the school board, to take in serious consideration renewing coaches' contracts. Find coaches who are good teachers, communicators, hard-working leaders that are motivators with integrity and intelligence that have compassion for the kids. If you can find anybody like this with all these attributes, maybe they should be superintendent, probably maybe instead of coach. But that's a lot to ask, but if they will bring some of those to the table, they will certainly do a lot to build character for the children. Something a school can do and a school board can help facilitate is a legitimate sports banquet for the athletes. A real sports banquet where students dress up and me and coaches wear ties. When my wife was a student at Clintwood, Lou Holt spoke at one of her athletic banquets. I feel assured Ms. Jesse remembers and likely attended, banquets with Pete Rose and John Wooden coming to Dryden. For those two young to remember, John Wooden coming to Dryden would be the equivalent of Lady Gaga or Bruce Springsteen coming to Lee Thier. The young athletes work hard, practice hard, and earn a lot of money while helping generate revenue for their school. For both Lee High and Toppin Law, travel will never be easy, getting home very late with homework, still to do, or tests and exercise complex. Ask you to get a noble speaker and bring a lifetime memory to these young student athletes. I think they deserve this and I believe you can sell tickets to parents and fans. That would help to free the class. Maybe Thomas Walker could be involved in it as well. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments for public expression? If not, we appreciate everybody's comments and certainly will consider what was brought before the board. Next, we'll return to reports. And I just wanted to speak just for a moment on the issue of the superintendent search, just to try to give the community and the employees, the school system, parents, children an idea of what we're doing. Of course, as everyone knows, I guess a couple of days after, a week or so after the December 15th meeting, Mr. Carter resigned. Mr. Brickley was gracious enough to come in and serve as interim superintendent. And I have no idea what his future plans are, but as of this time, the job's open to anyone to apply. The job has been posted in local newspapers, a lot of different educational websites, specifically associations, Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals and Virginia Association Superintendent, different things like that that kind of get the word out. Plus, I think word of mouth has just gotten out about the job. And I don't know how many people have asked for applications and packets, but I mean, I know there's been five or six that have at least made contact. I think there's probably five or six people in the county that are also qualified and I suspect will apply. So the deadline's February 29th. So hopefully we'll get a lot of good applicants and have a healthy pool of candidates to choose from and then we'll go from there. We'll decide who needs to be interviewed or who should be interviewed, conduct interviews. And I don't know how it's going to work exactly. We've kind of had preliminary discussions, but we haven't finalized anything. But we'd also like to have some element of community participation. And I don't know what form that can take or how we would handle the logistics of that, especially if it's someone that comes in from out of town to do an interview. So anyway, I just wanted to give you an update on that. The second issue under reports is technology and I'll ask Mr. Kidwell to address that. Anyone else that wants to also?
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We, last meeting, we got elected, me and David, to be on the budget committee. Part of being on that budget committee, you have to come here and go through bills. Then you vote to approve those bills. After going through bills, you know, I work a full-time job and that's most everybody does. I come up here in my overalls, my work boots, and start going through bills. You come across a bill for cell phones. I know it's all over the county that we've ripped everybody's cell phones from and making it hard on them, but I just don't think that we need to spend $3,461 a month on cell phones. That's a little steep. I know some of it is reimbursed as the federal E-plan, I'm told. I'm also told that it goes down every year, the amount that is covered there. We have 48 phone lines, I've got the bill right here, 48 phone lines including MiFi Couldn't find half of them, just to be honest. Some of them we found, some of them we, I don't think, we still don't know where a couple of them is. I just want to let everybody know that we're not here to take things away from everybody and make it hard on everybody. We're here to cut money and get it to where it needs to be, which is in the classroom for my kids and those, everybody else's. And that's just a good start. I did want to clear this up to the community. We're not doing this for no reason. It is a lot of money.
Anyone else have any comments in that regard? I'll just add to it. Only in Lee County can dead people have a cell phone that the school board's paying for, which means the taxpayers are paying for it. And even better, dead people use their phone in December. So that's the kind of thing that we're talking about. And so we made a decision to take up cell phones, try to save this money, get them to people that who need them, that's fine. But I mean, it was really a kind of a battle to get people to give up their school board issued cell phones because I guess they were using them as personal phones, I don't know. But anyway, we're getting control of that situation and we're not going to spend $3,400 a month on cell phones in this county and this school system anymore. We can use that money for something else that's more productive for our teachers and our students. Anybody else have any comments? Next issue is joint budget meeting. It's under my name, David. Would you like to address that?
Let's see, what is it? Oh, February 4th, we had a joint meeting with the board of supervisors, talking about the budget, just giving them a general overview since they, well, between both of the boards with so many new people involved in the issue, going over the process. And I think the biggest thing that I heard from that, from the board of supervisors, were that they wanted to be a little bit more involved in their budget process. And as we can, we will do that.
Anyone else have any comments on the budget meeting?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank the guys that came from the board supervisors that did participate in that.
Next issue under reports is the early enrollment program. David, Jason?
I've given to you two different plans on the early retirement incentive program. Plan one is what we currently have with a few revisions to it, basically to clarify some things on it. And then Plan two, and let me go back to Plan one just a minute, and that is that you must be at least 30 years or have 30 years of service. And at 30 years, you will receive 15% of your final salary. And then that goes down for the next years and then 10 years of health insurance with the requirement then, other than if you go past the 30, well, to the 33 years without having to do work days. After 33 years, no work days. Plan two is a one-time payment of $30,000 for professional employees or $15,000 for support employees. They may roll this over or a portion of this over if they choose into a retirement plan and they may remain on the county health insurance. This Plan two would be the equivalent of two years of the current plan. One thing we might want to look at, and that's under the eligibility, the second bullet there, about maybe considering changing the 30 years to 25 or even 20 years.
Anyone else have any comments on that?
But I will say this much, and I didn't quite look at my agenda right there. We probably need to be making a decision very, very soon on this to give employees time enough to decide if they want to take it and also for them to get in touch with the central office, get in touch with the IRS.
About the March meeting?
That's going to be probably closing in. I guess that would be probably the definite. We may have to, we might want to need though to advertise this a little bit to...
Send it out.
Send it out so they can already begin to look at it with the understanding that there might be some changes to it in the final form.
Okay. Next is enrollment. Mr. Brickley?
From January of 2015 to this year, January 16th, the enrollment is down by 57 students. And from last month, December, to this month, it's down by two.
Next is financial. Mr. Brickley and Ms. Lambert?
Good evening. This is a summary of our financial activity for the month of January. We received $2,975,238.55 in revenues. As of January 31st, we had received 47.9% of our estimated revenues for the year. Our expenditures for the month of January totaled $3,303,378.6. And as of January 31st, we had used 41.8% of our appropriations.
Any discussion, any questions?
Yeah, the bills that I had questions on, we're not approving them tonight, is that correct?
They are on there to be approved, so when we get to the action items, you'll just need to make that public, I guess, that whatever bill you wouldn't want approved.
Right. But the vote now to approve to pay the bills does not include them?
It does include them.
It does include them.
But when you take the vote, at that point, you can eliminate.
Thank you. Next we move to the action agenda items. First point of business under it is consider approval to renew or bid insurance coverage for 2016, 2017 school year. This is all policies except health insurance. Again, we call on Ms. Lambert.
This is something we look at every February. We have a renewal packet for our current insurance carrier from Virginia, from Virginia Association of Counties. So each year, we ask the board if they want to put our insurance out to bid or if we want to renew with VACOR.
When's the last time it was bid on, Lee High?
Maybe in the last five years. I would have to look to tell you. But we don't have local agents who bid on it. They just don't have access to the, I guess, the totals that we would need on our buildings and stuff like that. They don't have a product to be able to serve us with that.
When do we have to have a decision made on renewal? When's the renewal coming up?
Well, renewal will be July 1st, but I have to have the renewal packet to VACOR put current information at least by March 1st.
In the budget meeting, did we not discover that we pretty much had not had an increase?
No, that's on health insurance.
Okay. Okay. Have we had a large increase to bill?
We did have an increase last year because of our experience in property and in student accident insurance. and in student accident insurance.
And when you have that, then when you, is it just like any other insurance? Like if you have a, a claim and you try to get it with someone else, does that claim work against you? Have you found that to be?
Mm-hmm. Experience, your experience is factored into the work conversation and the... Our property and the student accident insurance. They do look at your past year's experiences.
This year by year?
Yes.
Then might be something we can look at. The time, the time is called.
Since it's been a few years, Ms. Lambert, I, I make the motion that we bid the insurance coverage.
I'll say it, David.
Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose.
Do we have time? That's my worry. Do we have time?
We do have time.
Okay.
Um, I do turn in the packet to VayCorp if we're going to renew by March first just for budgetary purposes.
Okay.
Because usually they can turn it around within a month and let us know what our premiums are going to be.
Okay.
Next, on the action agenda items, is consider approval of elimination of advanced ed. Mr. Kidwell, would you care to address that?
Well, I'd like to open the floor up to some principles. Look like we've got plenty here tonight. See if anybody can tell us what advanced ed is, what it's for, and how it benefits our kids. Our children, our teachers. There comes a break, so...
In other words, we're looking for a fan of advanced ed.
Well, not necessarily a fan. We just need to know what we're looking at.
I'm not a fan of advanced ed, but I can always speak for Lee High School. I cannot say that advanced ed increases our student achievement. The standards for advanced ed do not particularly address student achievement. It does not make our teachers better teachers. And again, I can always speak for Lee High School.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any director want to tell us about advanced ed? I mean, honestly, we do think, uh... We're paying forward, we're paying our fair, we're paying bills, uh, to the tune of six thousand dollars. When these people come and do a review here.
That's, of course, that's not every year.
That's every five years.
Every five.
That's me. And it's very time-consuming.
We've heard, we've heard rumors of limo rides. I don't think nobody should be paying for a limo, uh, when our kids sit beside trashcans catching water.
Do we have a motion for the elimination of advanced ed?
Yeah. I'm not a place of all of that, in any of those categories. But I would just like to, um, to mention that when the advanced ed process happened, community people were involved. And I would like to ask the board to table it, to give community people the opportunity to express their opinion of the process, because people were involved in the process. And also, I speak from, um, a review team experience, because I did that myself. And I did that through, in contract through the Department of Health and Human Services. But the whole idea of going to schools and to school districts and taking a look at all aspects of the performance of the school, for the school to come to identify, help schools identify their strengths, their weaknesses, and an action point to improve it. And I think our kids only benefit by that or from that if we take those action steps to move them forward. And my experience has always been, um, that it has helped school districts, districts. Yes, it's, it's, it puts more work on people, but, once you make those improvements, hopefully, you put them in place, you implement them, and you move forward, and you continue to improve. I don't think it's all negative. I think it's worth a discussion.
Thank you for that, Tom. I, I will tell you that I had sent out a list of questions to Mr. Bricky a month or so ago, after the last meeting. One of them was, you know, tell me about advanced ed, see what teachers think. Because I'm getting all these comments, and other board members getting the same comments. So, Mr. Bricky did a survey, and he got page after page of comments from teachers. And you have to look really hard to find anything positive in those comments. Teachers are absolutely against this, this program and, uh...
And principals.
And principals, absolutely.
When, when we, when we hear, when we hear of something from someone that, that they think takes them out of the classroom, takes them away from being able to do their job, we just don't go, that's the end of it. We investigate it. Everything that we, we hear from teachers, we talk to, um, numerous of teachers. I've talked to teachers from primary schools, high schools, principals. And I'll be, I'll tell you a little quick story. I saw that Ms. Warner was going to do a presentation with advanced ed, and I had not discussed advanced ed with her. So, I called her and I said, "I'm sorry, you know, I see that you're doing a presentation, and we're thinking about doing away with it, are you a fan of it?" And she said, "No." You know, she was asked to do this. I don't know why we can't do things together. To me, if you have strong principals and you have a good superintendent, you don't need an advanced ed to help you better your school. We can work together, and community input is wonderful. But we don't need someone telling us how that we need to teach, you know, to do this. And it's, it's, it costs money. We, we are trying our best to, to save money, to put it back into our teachers to... Lee High needs a math teacher bad. Ms. Jordan, I mean, we, we need a math teacher bad. When the, when the state, we did that math SOL, it's very hard. And we have got to, we have got to save every thousand dollars that we can save and give back our teachers and keep good teachers and let our teachers be on the scale as surrounding county teachers. That's why we're sick of money being wasted. We're not mean. We're not up here trying to take this and take that. We are trying to do the right thing. That's all. And I, I think that, you know, we, we can do that by working together. You know, and community, community support is good. Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's wonderful. But I don't think we have to pay for it. I don't think we have to pay somebody. Teachers have to do it.
Do we have a motion for the elimination of advanced ed?
I make the motion to eliminate advanced ed.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose.
No.
Next, we'll, uh, move to school calendar. Connie Doherty?
Miss Doherty has a lead.
So, we're not going to discuss the calendar tonight?
I could probably tell you what's going on. We had a Communications Committee meeting last Monday, and, uh, that turned into a calendar meeting later with those representatives from the schools. And, uh, there was seven or eight calendars to that point that they had come up with. But those representatives gave Connie some more, uh, things that they, they wanted her to work on. Taking away the, uh, the professional development days during the year. Two weeks before Christmas for, uh, vacation. Sandra, can you remember the rest? There was...
Even three, just a three that they wrote down?
They wanted to target as many days as they could in the fourth Christmas.
Yes.
Many holidays and...
I'm sorry?
In the twenty-first instead of the...
Twenty-third.
Yes.
But they wanted to go to December twenty-third. And, um, Connie have, uh, the day, if possible, time they got days, and then maybe four straight breaks as possible, time they got days.
So Connie took those recommendations and, and put them into three more calendars, which are out to the schools now. We're supposed to get some input back on, on those by Friday, I think. And she's going to try to, to get them into a calendar that will be appropriate to everyone. One of the things that I might mention that, that the Communications Committee was interested in was starting the school before August the fifteenth. And, uh, they told me that some counties around us were doing that. I did some research into it, and they are. I'm going to meet with one of the superintendents tomorrow to see exactly how he's doing it. But I think I know how he's doing it, so maybe we'll be able to do that for you in the future, okay? But Connie's, Connie's going to try to get these together Friday and take a look, look at them next week. And then we'll send it back out to the, to the schools for the teachers to look at it and get another vote on it.
I move that we table the school calendar.
Yeah, because I think there was to vote on it tomorrow. So, let's...
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose. Next, we'll consider approval of a resolution recognizing Virginia's school board appreciation. Now, Mr. Bricky?
Yes, I'd like to, this time, I'd like to ask the school board to consider the approval of a resolution recognizing Virginia's school board appreciation.
I'll make a motion.
Second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose. Next, we'll, next, we'll consider approval of a proclamation recognizing school board clerk appreciation week. Mr. Bricky? Second?
Second.
All in favor, I? I oppose. Next is consideration of overnight field trips. Mr. Bricky?
In your package, you should have had overnight field trips and taken a look at them. If you would consider the approval of those overnight field trips.
I did have one question on one of them, and that was, are we going to be out by June thirteenth for, for them to take it?
Is it the one that...
It's, it's to June the seventh now, so I, I hope you'll be out June thirteenth. I'm sure we will.
We have a motion to approve those field trip requests?
I make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose.
Also, I'd like for you to consider approval of school field trip requests for second semester.
We have a motion to approve those field trip requests?
I make a motion.
You have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose. Next, we call them, Ms. Lambert, for consideration of approval of supplemental appropriations for e-learning backpack initiative Title I.
Yes, in your package, you have a resolution that is approved. We will submit to the Board of Supervisors to have this funding added to our budget for the year. We budget each year, our Title I funds and some of our other federal funds, we don't normally find out what our award is until sometime in the fall, and we budget in the spring. So, we base what we put in the budget on what we've received previously. And if our, um, program directors have been to a meeting and they've said we're going to see a five percent increase or decrease, uh, and we'll adjust it accordingly. This year, we were fortunate in that we received an additional three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in Title I funds, and so we need to have that added to the budget. And, um, our technology department has also been awarded an e-learning backpack initiative, which will help to put devices in the hands of all high school students in the next four years. And that's a total of fifty thou, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
So, do we have a motion for approval to accept the supplemental appropriations for e-learning backpack initiative in Title I?
Some of...
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose. Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Uh, next, we have consideration of approve, an approval of payment of bills. Ms. Lambert?
I'll be happy to answer any questions if, if there are any.
We have a motion to approve payment of the bills. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion. That we approve payment of the bills, uh, set off, take out of that payment, the bill for legal expenses. It's currently before the board, because there's some things on that that I think we need to, need to look at. That's my motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose. Next, we have reports and recommendations of the board. Anyone have, you think they want to address?
Uh, in, in the beginning, I'll, uh, have a bunch of thank yous. Uh, I'd like to thank the Culinary Arts and Ms. Wilson for the food that they prepared at our joint budget meeting. And I'd like to, to thank Ms. Ely and her, and I'm sorry, it's home ec today.
Extremely consumer science, please, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Sorry, it's home ec today, anyway. I'm a history teacher, please, so, of the food tonight. Um, I'd also like to offer my thanks and appreciation to our clerks, Alicia, Denise, and Catherine. And I'd like to thank those who attended at the joint budget workshop. Uh, and I'm, I'm sorry that John couldn't be here tonight, because you need to hear his story a little bit on the spelling bee. And that is, last year, he was first one out. First round, first out. In a year's time, here he is, the champion. That's something to be proud of. And as I say, I wish he could have been here tonight. And, uh, indirectly, again, without entering into, uh, debate a little bit, but if a certain person, when he goes out the door, will turn to his right and look on the wall, there's a board there that talks about educators of distinction, and the deadline is March thirty-first. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I would. Um, at the last board meeting, I voted no against, um, the new attorney and, um, new superintendent. I want to tell everybody that I did not vote no because of Mr. Bricky and, uh, and Will. I voted no because of the process that I didn't think was fair. Uh, also, there was a list that was circulated that said, uh, these are some issues that have been brought to my attention by board members. I agreed to make one request on everyone's behalf for efficiency purposes. Uh, I consider myself a part of this board. I was not asked to be a part of this. And I would have addressed school buses much more than cell phones. Uh, lastly, um, you know, I coached football and baseball at Pennington High School from nineteen seventy-two, uh, until consolidation. I remember how good those years were. I remember how hard those years were. And I remember how much we want to respect. I'm saying this now because a lot of you people want to leave before we go into executive session. And we're going to discuss coaches. I've not talked to anyone about coaches at any school since January first. I have had no contact with, with anyone at this table, on this board, about coaches at any school. I, I'll be voting no, uh, on these coaches. Again, because the process has nothing to do with the names. Uh, I understood Mr. Martin was told face-to-face that he would not be returning to, to Lee High School. If that was not done, I apologize. That's not a manly thing to do. That's not the right thing to do. Again, um, should you leave, I want you to know, because, uh, you know, last time, that fell through the cracks, um, as to, to my concern. And again, Mr. Bricky and Mr. Sturman have my utmost respect. I'd like to read this and close my little rant here. This is not me. This is the opinion of James P. Jones, who is the Chief United States District Judge. Uh, "These cases should be a lesson to local school board members if one is needed of the danger of micro management. It is far better for school board members, most of whom are part-time volunteers, to concentrate on selecting a well-qualified professional superintendent in whom they have faith and lead to that person the selection and assignment of subordinate school personnel. A school board should utilize its time in deciding the appropriate education policy for the community and make sure that the superintendent implements that policy. When school board members do not follow these principles, not only will education in their community likely suffer, but they will also expose themselves to liability described in this opinion." Again, that is not my words. That is a, um, words of a district judge. And if you'll remember, uh, that little page cost us some money, moving through.
Maybe you should have read that the last four years of some of the meetings, the way things were done.
Amen.
All right. Now, I ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive, close session to consider Personnel Section two point two, Diet three seven one one A, one of the Code of Virginia, to discuss personnel.
We have a second?
I second.
Discussion? All in favor, I? I oppose.